This meeting is being livestreamed, good. It looks like we're live. So, welcome to our Facebook Live. This is a Facebook Live Q and A with the six Surrey Heath County councillors. I'm going to ask each one to introduce themselves, but before I do, unfortunately councillor Rebecca Jennings Evans has had a family emergency. And she said she's going to try and join, but there's a very good chance that if she does, she will be late. So if we could start with Trevor Hogg. If you could introduce yourself Trevor and tell us the division you represent.
Good evening, I'm Trevor Hogg and I'm the county councillor for Cambly East.
Wonderful, thank you. And Edward? Do you want to mute yourself Edward? Thank you.
Yeah, I was trying to do more than one thing at a time miserably. Good evening, Edward Hawkins, county councillor Parkside Head of Side, and Wellington Park and Borough Councillor Parkside.
Thank you, Richard?
Richard Tier, county councillor for Windlesham, Bagshot and Cheltenham.
Okay, and David, if you want to mute please sir?
Absolutely, yeah, David Lewis, county councillor for Cambly West and Borough Councillor for Watchits.
Great, and I'm Paul Deech and I represent Mitchett, Frimley Green and Deep Cut at the county council and Mitchett and Deep Cut at the Borough Council. Now, this is a county councillor livestream tonight. I'm hoping we will, most of the questions we will take and answer will be on county council matters, but as there are one or two of us who are dual-hatted councillors, we should be able to answer any of her borough nature as well, but hopefully we won't get too many of those. Now, we have had quite a lot of questions in advance and I'm just going to pull up my document with those questions. And we'll read those out and I'll nominate whichever appropriate councillor to answer. Now, we've had, let's have a look here. We've had one from Gerry and this one is actually of a police nature. This is why are the police not dealing with many modified cars that are screaming around our area of late? It's like, now I'm not a car person. He says it's like the Circuit de la Sartre, is it? During the 24 hours of Le Mans and it's really getting on my nerves. So that is a police question. I'll take that one, I'll field that one. I know that Surrey Police are working very hard on antisocial behaviour involving vehicles. There's been some of these meets at various places. One in particular, I think, is at Sainsbury's Watchmore Park. And I think they've introduced a, if I remember right, an anti-dispersal order there. And I think they're reviewing other areas as well, but it is something that they are monitoring very closely. If you witness any of this type of behaviour involving vehicles, people driving them in an antisocial manner, please try and get the registration number without putting yourself in any danger and report that to Surrey Police either on 101 or via their Facebook page or website. Now, so the next question is from Ruth. And that question is, hello, I was wondering why our local area committee was cancelled again this June, as it was last year? Again, I'm happy to take that very quickly. The reason why is that the local area committees are disbanding. And that's not just the Surrey Heath one, but all the local area committees and joint committees across Surrey. Surrey County Council Cabinet made the decision that they would try a different model. And I have to say, as somebody who, and I'm speaking for myself now, not other councillors, I do realise that depending on where you represent, you may have a slightly different experience of local area committees. But I've been involved in the local area committee ever since I've been a county councillor and visited as a member of the public, even before I became a councillor in 2011. My personal view is that local area committees are tired and there needs to be a new approach. And the councillor, Trevor and I actually attended, and David, I think, last week an event which is all about community engagement. And they've recruited new officers to bring forward a new model of working. And we'll be releasing details about that very soon. I don't know if any of you want to come in on local area committees? Have you got anything to say on that Edward?
I will, I am actually, yes, they needed a new format, but I'm quite sorry to see them go. I think it gives a direct opportunity for engagement with residents on things that matters to residents. And I'm unconvinced at this stage, in the absence of full information, on the alternative that's coming forward. But I think, can I just say the jury is out? Although I, my instinctive reaction is to say, that's a shame. Yes, it needs refreshing, but let's see what comes forward and then we'll have to take a view.
I know you weren't able to make the briefing that we all attended last week, but I have to say, I was quite impressed with what they had presenting to us. And I think you will be too Edward, once you get an opportunity to find that.
I don't impress easily Paul.
I know you're not, I know you don't. Richard, did you want to say something?
Paul, talking about being impressed, I was very glad to hear that they're going to be using the local libraries as a point of engagement. I think if our residents know that they can pop into a local library at a specific time and talk to an engagement officer, I think everybody will find that very useful. But as Edward says, we'll wait and see how well it works.
Yeah, but to answer-
I agree with you, they were tired.
Right, and to answer Ruth's question directly, why was the meeting cancelled this June? The reason was is there was no decision-making items to discuss. And so as a result, there was no point in having a meeting. And officers unfortunately have been instructed that they can only hold a meeting if there is a decision-making item. The local area committees, like I say, will cease and that will happen in October. And we will all keep residents informed via our social media and other means of communication to inform them on the new model. So that's on the question on local area committees. Now, there's a question here from Steve and I'm pretty sure this just came in as we were setting up, pretty sure this is for David Lewis, as that it's in Frimley. It says, good afternoon councillors, I'm a resident near Tomlin's Pond, Frimley. My question is, why has there been no grass cutting in Croft Way? This area has been missed all year and the green area at the end of the close has become unsightly with tall weeds. One of the residents has very kindly removed all the broken branches that fell in the high winds. These jobs should have been done by the council. So that's his first question. And his second question, which I think is related, secondly, the hedges around Tomlin's Pond have grown so tall that the wild birds have great difficulty taking off and have to fly around in circles to escape over the treetops. The laurel hedging is also covered for illegal fishing and other dodgy activities that are often going on. These hedges should be cut down to around three foot. Can you please arrange for workmen to expedite and clear up? David, if you wanted to unmute.
Thank you. Yeah, actually vegetation care is actually down to the Borough Council. And I've got a similar issue up at Watchits Slakes at the moment. Yeah, I think the best bet is I can contact either councillor Crook or Rathron or if you contact them yourself. And yeah, it needs to be done under the auspices of Surrey Heath Borough Council, I'm afraid.
Great, thanks for that David. So David Lewis is councillor, David Lewis is the councillor for Cambly West.
Yeah, it's my division, not my ward.
Yeah, so represents Frimley there, but this is, as he says, is a Borough Council matter. Okay, great, thanks for that. By the way, if you're watching this live on Facebook, if you have any questions, put them in the comments there and we will try and get those answered. And if you belong to any local Facebook groups, please do share them. And I want to invite actually our county councillors here to share this to your own pages, which I'm going to do to mine now. So share to page, I'll put that on my page now. There we go. And yeah, I give your residents an opportunity to ask any questions. Now, we do have also some members of the public and other councillors, Borough councillors in our Zoom call. Their cameras are off at the moment. I will be inviting you to turn your camera on very shortly to ask any questions that you might have. You might want to put in the chat if you do have a question, to let me know if you have a question, put it in the chat there and then I know to invite you. So, next question. Now, one for Richard here. We've already touched on the local area committee. You've had a question about that, so we don't need to ask that one. But there's another one on what rights and responsibilities do fibre optic installation companies have when they are installing cables in my street? I think this is an ongoing issue in a number of divisions at the moment. Thankfully not mine, but Richard, go ahead.
My recent experience has been that the contractors vary a lot. And basically what happens is that they go to county and get a licence to dig the roads up and put their fibre cable underneath. The licence entitles them to use the pavement and the road, provided that they allow residents to get in and out of their homes. And there have been a couple of occasions when they've forgotten to put the plates down and residents can't drive out of their own houses or can't drive into them. But the county officer who looks after it sorted this out very, very quickly. As far as the rights are concerned, they can put their junction boxes right up to your property. But what they can't do is put them on your property without your permission and they have to ask your permission. So all of the fibre companies have something called a way leave manager who if they want to come on your property should write you and ask you for permission to come on your property. And if you don't get a letter asking for permission, you're perfectly entitled to say no. Talking about permissions, if you live in a private road, then they must ask the residents of the private road if they can dig the road up. And they can't do that without your permission. One of the difficulties that they do have when they ask for permission to cross your property for any reason is that they then have access for ever and a. So once you've granted permission, they can come in after having given you notice to come and service the cabling or carry out repairs. That's pretty reasonable, except when you want to dig up your own property, you have to ask them for permission to do it and you've got to give them three months' notice. So be very careful about what they're asking for and where they're asking for it. Last but not least is the repair. They only have to repair the part of the pavement or road that they've dug up. They are not going to resurface the whole pavement or the whole road. And I know it's disappointing, but we can't force them to do that. Some of the companies are repairing really well and spending a lot of time and making sure the repairs are neat and tidy. Others have had to be called back and make good the repairs that they've made. A couple of them sadly have missed a repair and have had to be called back. But if you do have a problem, please get in contact. And there's a very good officer on highways who will get it sorted out very quickly. So contact us or me if you're in my division and I'll sort it out for you.
Yeah, and we've all got our names on the, on our lower thirds there. So if you are watching this and you want to contact any one of us, you just put our name. So for instance, if it's Richard Tier, it's richard.tier@surreyccc.gov.uk. And the same for any else. Edward, I was going to ask you to, because I know this is a problem in your area too. And did you want to say something on this?
Yeah, very much so. Thank you for, thank you Richard for that. I've been at, I left to come here, a meeting with the senior people at two, including the MD. They had invited four people from one road and a lot more people turned up, which they weren't expecting. And that was the first disaster. And they were trying to convince us that this one road represented, as far as they were aware, all of Parkside. Well, it doesn't. There's something like 250 houses on Parkside Estate. And the residents were all very unhappy at the lack of publicity, the lack of forewarning and the prospect of two putting up nine metre high masts above ground plus a metre and a half below ground. And then stringing wires from these poles through to properties if they couldn't get direct access through trunking. The view was that this was very much 20th century technology. It wasn't the high-flying fibre that was being mentioned. And what we did get, or the residents get, and I rather upset one of our well-known Liberal Democrat activists, because the MD started saying, well, of course, yeah, unfortunately, the people that were doing the works rather went ahead without authority and it's not my problem, Gov. And I did suggest that in the real world, he was the MD, he carried the council, he should resign. I think that upset certain Lib Dem gentle we all know and don't love. But we did manage to get a three-month moratorium on them progressing polls, because I believe, and I've had long conversations with Michael Gove, in fact, both Josephine and I were speaking to Michael at 10 o'clock last night on this. And we, I know that the head of planning at Surrey Heathens had lengthy discussions and I'm waiting for a report from him on that. And there are basically, the residents are trying to resist and they're saying, we don't want these poles on our estate or on our road, in our area. And there was of the 35 people there, of the four that were originally invited, there was nobody who put their hand up and said, yes, I want this, which is very interesting. Now, how much notice is taken that? But say we did get that three-month moratorium on any work and they have promised to step up their communications, because they're a communication company. And I think it's polite to say it's been left lacking on the communication with residents in my county division.
Okay.
How much notice? I don't know. But certainly, you know, to hear the MD saying, oh, it's actually somebody else's fault that this happened. I was not impressed, I have to say.
Fair enough. Well, thanks for that, thanks for that update Edward. It's fair to say that yourself, other county councillors like Richard and others are working on this along with our MP, Michael Gove. So now, if you are in our Zoom call as a member of the community and you have a question, could you use the chat feature in Zoom to let me know that you have a question? I'm going to invite Sean Garrett, councillor Sean Garrett, old Dean councillor, to turn his camera on and unmute and ask his question. Hi Sean.
Good evening all, and thank you for organising this, Paul. It's a really good idea and hopefully we can have some more of them. So my question is, I've actually had a personal experience recently where my son's EHCP was delayed for what was a very, very administrative issue for three months. Now, obviously you guys know me, I wasn't going to let that lie. I contacted the relevant departments at county and got it moved on. But my concern is, for many, many years, we've heard stories that CAMs and the EHCP department are speeding things up and they've put things in place. My concern is, I'm still hearing horror stories about this and I'd like to hear some positive news that things are moving forward, because it's a major concern of mine, I know for many residents, not just in my ward, across the county.
Okay, well, thanks for that Sean. So Sean's asking a question actually in his capacity as a resident and a parent.
Yes.
Rather than as a councillor, which is great. Now, I happen to know that your county councillor is Trevor Hogg, a friend of yours.
Yes.
So no doubt this is something that, I don't know if Trevor has the answer for you right now, but if not Trevor, I'm sure he will get it for you.
Yeah, I know, I think one of it is capacity of the mental health services. And we had a very, very long discussion of that just today in the Adults and Health Select Committee. And there is a lot going on to try and transform what Surrey and Borders do. But sitting behind that is, you know, there is a lack of trained mental health personnel within the country as a whole. And so that lands Surrey and Borders with a recruitment problem, which they're working hard on, they're trying to restructure things. But there is no instant solution unfortunately. It takes several years to actually train somebody up to the right sort of skill level. And there's a shortage. What they are trying to do is make very efficient use. They are moving some mental health services to the GPs. So they then have something called GPILS, which is the GP Integrated Mental Health Service. So that within a GP surgery, they've actually got somebody that's mental health trained, which then shortens the whole sort of process, cuts down on the amount of referrals that are going on and stops people being put in a long-term waiting queue for issues to be seen to, which also means that if somebody's got an issue such as anxiety, it doesn't sit there and fester for a long time, turning into something that's then serious and chronic and might mean that they have to be hospitalised for instance. So there is evidence that that's working, but it's going to be a long grind to get through the backlog and also change from where people have had to go into institutions and into long-term chronic care to much more preventive service.
Okay, thank you Sean.
Thanks Trevor. And Sean, if you or any other residents watching this have any issues of a similar nature, do engage with your county councillor, you know, so that, you know, if there are any problems with the process or whatever, they can get that looked at for you. All right, thanks Sean, thank you very much. Now, if you have joined the Facebook Live part of this and you have a question, please do put it in the comments and I will get that read out. So there is one in there now from Joe Dickinson. And it's one for me. Hi Mr Deech, reparking it Mitchett Heath, also the change of use of the canal cafe. Not sure about the, I've not heard about the change of use of the canal cafe, but I will look at that. I know you want to talk to me about the parking problems at Mitchett Heath. We have recently introduced double yellow lines there, but it seems that they're not getting enforced. And obviously, double yellow lines are only as good as the enforcement. So I will speak to the parking services team, which we share with Woking Borough Council. And we have six parking enforcement officers in Surrey Heath, although I do believe, if I read my notes correctly, I think they are looking at employing another one. And I will ask them to make sure that Mitchett Heath is added to the schedule. It might just be that because the double yellow lines are so newly installed there, that they haven't got around to putting it on the schedule, but I'll make sure that they do that. And I've also had a request for some enforcement at the car park in Deep Cut. I know that's not related to you Joe, but if anybody, any Deep Cut residents are watching this, I'll get that looked at too. So okay, so that's that one. Now, I've got a question here for Edward Hawkins. Raving Scope Crossing, what's happening? And I know Edward, you worked for many years to get this problem sorted out, but it doesn't seem like there's any movement. So could you give us an update on that?
Right, so what's happened to me?
You are here, we see you and hear you loud and clear.
Yeah. The crossing is still progressing. I don't have a date for the start, but the most recent correspondence, communication I've had with the officers is that they're going through the legal processes and they're looking at some of the design features of the crossing insofar as the operation of the lights, the type of light, looking at the age profile of the people that likes to be using the crossing. And I have been assured that it will be up and running for September this year for the new intake. There's a lot of work to be done, but a lot has been done. All the design work has been done underground. And it is, as I say, we've got to get the notices and I'm expecting to hear that they are going forward in the next week or so. And that's part of it and the transport authorities, outside the county transport, people have got to be signed it off. So there's a number of iterative stages, all of which are very frustrating. And they seem like bureaucracy, but because it's children, we have to take extra care on getting these things in place. And as I say, I'm in regular contact with the officers on this and other masses within my division. And I have been assured that everything, all things being equal, fair win etcetera, it will be in place for September. And I really not really be more positive than that. Because I may be frustrated as everybody else, but I just don't want to raise expectations too high. And I know a number of people have been trying to jump on some other works that have been going on in the area to claim that they've done this. They haven't, but it's not a done deal yet, it's still progressing. Hopefully that gives enough of an answer. I'm happy to have a further conversation offline with the questioner.
Yeah, yeah, it does, it does answer it. I mean, quite a lot of time, and I found this with some road schemes in my area, you know, it does. Even when you've got the money, when you've found the funding and you've got the decision made, it can, there is still process to go through and it can, it can take a little while. But Edward nailed this particular problem and I know he's on top of it. So thanks for the update Edward. Right, the next question, bear with me, I'm going to read it out, I think it's for-
Sorry Paul, can I just come back and just say that in addition, I've also, I think it's only fair to say that, one thing I very remiss, I am in regular contact with the school, through the head in the school sector and of course with Louise Granger, who has been my partner in crime, if you like, on driving this forward. And it's really, you know, I think every time I thank, and I very remiss here, I thank Louise for what she's done in the petition and getting this one as far as it had, you know, along with the help from you and other councillors and the county officers. So it has been very much a team effort, which has gathered momentum over the past six, nine months, or six months anyway.
Brilliant, yeah, thanks Edward, thanks for that. So the next question is for Trevor. How could the traffic flow be improved through the Jolly Farmer Junction? When the lights were out, it all worked much better. Yeah, there was a bit of a noise about this on social media, I noticed. Go ahead.
Yeah, and it's a difficult one, because I think I would say the same about the meadows, that when the lights are out there, it flows much faster. The problem is, if you are a pedestrian, if you are on a bicycle, if you have a pushchair or you're in a wheelchair, you're in trouble because there is no means of getting across the road because the traffic's moving too fast and it becomes particularly dangerous at night.
There's quite a few blind spots there, I noticed, when I've cycled.
That's right, yeah. Particularly if you're coming from the red road direction down to the roundabout, then you're pretty much invisible to the A30 traffic.
Right.
Which could be moving at speed and because it's a 50 mile an hour limit. So yeah, it's-
So they're there for a reason, aren't they Trevor?
Yeah, and they're there for a reason. And the reason is the history of accidents that was there before they got in. What may need to happen is some tuning, but it can't really be done at the moment, because at the moment there is a huge amount of roadworks going on in the N3, which is causing traffic to divert to the A30 and A325. And this week in particular, there's some sort of railway strike or something, I think. So we've-
More cars on the road.
Yeah, it's very difficult and to tell you can get to a period where you can get a statistically valid exercise in place. Otherwise you'd be changing it and then finding that you changed it the wrong way.
Right, okay, brilliant. Well, thanks for that, thanks Trevor. Next question is for David Lewis. What is the progress with the Frimley to Cambly cycle? What is the progress with the Frimley to Cambly cycleway? This is something that's quite close to my heart too. So go ahead, David.
Right, yeah, the cycleway. It's pretty much going ahead as planned. Up to this point, they've sort of developed the proposals, carried out public consultation, completed their analysis and a consultation report has been produced. I've seen it. I know there's a plan to make it public. I don't know if it's been made public yet, but there is one out there. What's next happening is they're going to require further funding. And for that, they've submitted a case to the National Highways. It said you've got to go through the next design stage and basically get all the necessary approvals as needed. So it's going ahead. It's a common theme here, it's going to take some time, but yes, it looks like it's going to happen.
Okay, great, thanks for that. I'm delighted that it is going to happen. And I think that we're going to see more of these, you know, active travel infrastructure coming forward soon, which is, which is great news. So let's have a look here. We've asked those, sorry, I'm just going to cross those off because we've got those done. Right, question for Richard. Why does county use cameras to enforce 7.5 tonne limits when the HGVs are going through restricted areas?
The cameras that the police use can, those that have number plate recognition can be used to enforce 7.5 tonne limits. Unfortunately, we don't have permission from the Department of Transport to do that. And so later in the year, our officers are applying for permission. And when that's granted, we can start to use the, the cameras that we have to enforce seven and a half tonne limits if they're looking over the area where we have a problem. So we're aware of the issue, but, and we are going to solve it, but it won't happen until later in the year.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Now, question, another question for Edward, and this is actually from one of the people who have joined us on the Zoom call, is one of your constituents. So I'll read out the question. May and June are key months for mental health, learning disability and autism. My question is, why is there very little information on hate crime campaign and signing of mental health pledge to keep Surrey residents safe and Surrey County Council strategy that nobody will left be, will be left behind? Can you advise on how we plan to empower the voice of those most vulnerable in our borough to be heard and acted upon going forward?
Right. Okay. I have any mental health issues, I normally refer to Sean Garrett, who I notice is still on here. And it's actually not Sean now, this is Sarah Jane. And her safeguarding portfolio. And I also refer them to the appropriate County Council Cabinet Member because it is such a complex issue. I know we, as a county, put a further ring fence, a further £11 million towards helping on the rising cost and problems with mental health, particularly in children. And I, I have to say, it's not an area, and I'm, I'm going to be open and honest, is that I have sufficient expertise to give an adequate and open answer. There may be others on here that are better placed than I to answer that question.
Okay, that's great. So, yeah, so I think really the best, the best for that constituent, definitely write to Sarah Jane. And I know she will, would love to hear from you. If you'd rather do that via Edward, as he's your councillor, surely you'll be happy to forward that on to her. So, great, let's get on to the next question. We've got some coming through via Facebook and one here from Timothy Passion. And I'm pretty sure this is the same Timothy Passion who was, who was one of our officers, very senior officers at the council and is now retired. His, his comment is, not a question, but a comment. Great to see the fantastic partnership working during the Covid response recognised. Congratulations to all concerned, particularly the army of volunteers who got us all through the vaccination programme. Yeah, absolutely, thanks Timothy. And actually, one of those members is in the call now, Attia Fard, who was heavily involved in that. I know that she has been invited to be recognised, but unfortunately he's going to be on holiday at the time. I waste, but yes, the chairman of Surrey County Council is doing some event on that. But thanks very much and also thank you for your service as well, Tim. You were heavily involved in all of that. And as you say, the response was fantastic and the council's response was fantastic too. So thank you very much for everything you did, as well as other council officers. So the next question, actually, I've got one in the comments of the Zoom here. I'm going to invite Attia, as that we have just mentioned her, to turn her camera on, unmute herself and read out her question. Are you there, Attia?
Yes, I am, sure.
Can you turn your camera on, please, Attia?
Yes, of course. Hello.
Hello, what's your question?
Yes, I just want to see if the council is going to invest in some exercise equipments across parks. Well, in parks across Surrey Heath.
Right, okay, sure. If you just mute yourself, as that your dog's barking. Now, I know you emailed me about this recently, Attia. And yes, ordinarily, the council would fund this sort of stuff. I know that there's exercise equipment on the Heatherside Recreation Ground where the Edward area Edward represents. I'm not sure where else in the borough they are.
Windshamfield Remembrance.
Windshamfield Remembrance, are there? Right, I've not been there in a long time. Okay.
Crabtree Park as well.
Crabtree Park, oh yeah, there's a trim trail at Crabtree Park, isn't there? And I know you want.
Frimley Lodge has got a trim.
Frimley Lodge got a trim trail, yeah. And I know that you want them for the Mitchit Recreation Ground, Attia. The thing is, is that play areas, as I know David Lewis knows only too well, there's a programme of refurbishment of play areas and recreation grounds. I know that David's, one in David's division took a very long time to get sorted out, but he worked very hard to get that sorted along with some local residents. The fact is, is that there just isn't the funding for that right now. Now, we can keep, we can keep mithering for it and ask it for it to be put on the, you know, on the schedule for, to identify funding. But I have to be honest with you and say that it's unlikely to be in, in the next couple of years, if the truth be told. Certainly for Mitchit Rec. What I think we ought to definitely do though, as that we have so much footfall at Frimley Lodge Park and that, you know, it benefits residents from across the borough, not just Mitchit. That's somewhere we ought to try and push for because it will.
Yeah, I think, of course, I think Frimley Lodge was the first place that I wanted to have more equipments and then after, yeah, Mitchit Rec. So if it can be in Frimley Lodge, it would be great.
It's a shame that Rebecca's not with us. So she, she had a family emergency, so, so may not make it. But Rebecca is also the portfolio holder for leisure and green spaces at Surrey Heath Borough Council. And she might have had something to help us with that. But I'll tell you what, why don't you and I connect after this call? And I'll put you in touch with Rebecca and let's see what we can do.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, we need to encourage residents to get exercise. No, no one more than me, I should say. And that would be a great way, wouldn't it? So thanks very much for your question.
Thank you.
Okay. So if you turn your camera off, please, Attia, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Now, let's have a look what else is coming in on Facebook. There's a few here. No, that's not a question. So let's go to this, one for Edward again. Any news on Heatherside Precinct? So this is another thorny issue that you've had to deal with. And I think it doesn't help that there are some, let's say, political activists trying to cause trouble over this. I know you've worked very hard on it, Edward, and do you want to give us an update?
Yeah, I was delighted to post on the Conservative Facebook page and on the Heatherside Residents' Facebook page that sometime in the next six weeks, the five trees on the precinct will be removed.
That's good news.
And the ground made good. And there will be new stock which is more suitable for that location. I emphasise that. I don't know what that stock is going to be because I'm waiting for advice from the agricultural officer, who is guiding and controlling the actions of the team. And that will be put in at the planting season, the back end of the year. So there is a massive movement forward. And so, you know, I'm really happy. That has taken a long, long time getting there. I am contributing some of my councillor allowance, the revenue cost towards this, which has actually enabled it to happen.
Oh, brilliant.
But the other part of that was that there was a tragedy and another unfortunate elderly lady trip on the paving at the, that runs from the main road through to the precinct, so running at the side of the pub. And it has now transpired that that land, much as people, everybody thought it was county, although some weren't so sure about it, is not within the county ownership or the county responsibility, shall I say. And I have been dealing with officers on that and they are going back to the registered owner of that land, requesting that there's some action taken to on the paving slabs there. So, yeah, I'm constantly forward. I don't have an exact time for when the works can start and I will keep everybody informed via the local ward residents' Facebook page and my own political and the, the Conservative Heatherside Parkside page as when I've got further news. But it should happen by the end of July, I would like to think.
Yeah, I know you've worked very hard on that. I know you've organised cleanup days and all that sort of stuff that some of us have helped you with. And, you know, I think that the trouble there, and correct me if I'm wrong, Edward, is that the land ownership is a real, a real issue in that there are some areas that are in the responsibility of the council, some, as you've mentioned tonight, privately owned. And it does make things horribly complicated. And I think it's really unfair actually that there are one or two people for election political purposes, trying to push blame onto you and when I know you've worked really hard on it. So, and I think the vast majority of sensible residents understand that too. So well done for all the work that you've done on that. And I've got a lot of friends that, I've got a lot of friends that live on the Heatherside and I can tell you from them, they're very grateful for everything that you've done. So thanks very much. Let's get on to, actually, there's another one for you, Edward, here, from Caroline. And it's on the same, it's on the same thing, actually. We are about to start a petition to the local area committee to try and get Surrey County Council to take a proper look at and carry out improvement work at Hever Ridge Shopping Arcade. Kind of in a similar vein to the petition that started the ball rolling for the crossing outside of Ravensgoat School. Is this now possible or is there going to be a new process for petitions?
I'll, I'll let you deal with that second part for. That may have been posted to you before I posted on the, about the removal of the trees. Most people have said, yes, great. And then some people, you know, they say, well, why are we losing trees? You're not losing trees, you're getting them replaced. The Ravensgoat Crossing petition was for a specific aim, which was a crossing. And I, I have a lot of sympathy with Caroline and who I have, I know who it is and I have great regard for. And I actually owe an email or something else, so please Caroline, hand it over there. But, you know, I have looked at how we tackle this. At one stage, I thought your fund Surrey would be the ideal place to try and do something strategic on the precinct. But the problem is with the land's adopted highway, before an application could be made to your fund Surrey, it had to be taken out of the highway. That meant residents would have to take ownership of that through a management company or some way. And there'd be still no guarantee. Then they have to put forward a business plan and there'd be no guarantee that it would be adopted. In the meantime, residents have become totally liable for the whole area. I would like to think that the work we're doing on the trees and the immediate surrounds and the, the county people have agreed to clear up some of the fly tipping that's happened. Some of the old sleepers have been dumped on the bushes there. But I would like to think that that will be, it's not going to resolve everything because it, but it will make it look better. And I, I would be happily to support a petition if I knew what the aims were. We need to have, rather than just say we need something done to it. And I'm sure Caroline probably understands this and accepts this, but there needs to be an idea. Originally, I advertised for an architect to come forward and help, but I didn't, I think that's an application for somebody in Spain or something, you know. Piazza Spanish, Piazza sounded great, but it wasn't really going to happen. So, you know, I'm not sure how, what it would achieve. And I would hope that with what I have managed to get done through five years I've been talking about this, five years I've been talking about the Ravensgoat Crossing as well, if not longer. But I, I would hope that that would, the residents would give it a breathing space. So let's see what we've got before we could take that one further.
Okay, thanks for that. And on the petition, yeah, there's, I mean, you could petition the local area committee until October, but actually the best process for petitioning would be through the Surrey County Council petition scheme, which you can do via the Surrey County Council website. And if you want to email me, I'll happily send you a link to that, not a problem. But I think if you want to start a petition, the best place for that is the Surrey County Council website through their petition scheme. I know that quite a lot of residents like these change.org petitions and so on. Nothing wrong with that, but it's much better actually if you use the council's own petition facility because it will get dealt with much quicker and much more efficiently if you do that. So that's on the Surrey County Council website. And if you can't find it, drop me a line, happily send you the link. Now, if you're in the Zoom call and have a question, please put it, let me know in the comments and I'll let you know. Ian Patterson, you asked for an update on Ravensgoat Crossing. Edward's already provided that, so you'll find that on the recording afterwards on the Facebook page. And if not, I'm sure Edward will be happy to give you an update on that. Great, so let's get to the next question. We've got about 10 minutes left. Don't mind going a little bit over, but I want to try and keep it as close to time as possible. Now, there's another one actually here for Edward, but I'll, I'll come to him on that in a minute. I'm going to give this one to, the next one's for David Lewis. Why was the bus stop near the health centre on the Frimley Road moved out of the pulling and into the traffic? And if you could try, because I've got a couple of more questions to read out, try and keep your answer brief, please, David. Thank you.
Will do. Yeah, it's moved into the traffic. On occasions it's causing utter chaos, so I'm not happy. I've done initial investigation and I've been told the reason it was moved was to widen the path so there was disabled access to the bus. I'm not convinced, I'm going to chase it up.
Great, great. So, yeah, so the questioner, if you're watching this live or the recording after, get in touch with David and he'll get that properly answered for you. Okay, great, thanks very much. One for Trevor. What are you doing to get the town centre fully occupied and make it a more welcoming place for visitors? And now that came in specifically for Trevor, I'm not sure why, it must be from one of his residents.
A, a big piece of the, of Cambly is of course within my division.
Of course it is, of course it is.
So I suspect that's the reason why. The mall itself is a Surrey Heath Borough Council owned and controlled.
Or the square.
Yeah, the SQ. So I'm not really going to talk about that. But what I have been doing is working on signage along the A30. And we are looking to upgrade and correct the signage that's around the town centre. At the moment, it still refers to the police station in three places. And the last time we had one was 11 years ago.
Right.
So there is, there is work on that to do. Some of the signs were also showing signs of age and a couple of them fell over in late recent gales. So there were issues like that. I'm also looking at some of the road safety issues. Um, I'm also looking at some of the road safety issues because um, there's been a, a number of pedestrian accidents um, in Pembroke Broadway and Noel Road, um, you know, that are of concern. So it's looking at things like that and trying to make it generally safer. And then also with the buses and bus stops, uh making them more accessible, uh making them so uh the newer ones that are going in that are Surrey controlled rather than the old clear channel ones um, are able to have real time passenger information as well, which tells people when there's a bus coming. So I'm working on that, um, and um, smartening things up a little bit as well, so I've just authorised today um, the replacement of the planters in Oblis Way of where the woods rotted. Um, sorting out the paving around them so that it's made safe again and taking the two trees that are outside the bear and ream jewellery uh and working on them to reduce the canopy um, and bring them back into, so they both roughly look the same size and shape. Um, and are in a healthier position, because uh both of the trees are showing, you know, problems um where a bit of tree work is needed. So it's all of those sorts of small things around the edges that actually make a difference, that you know, change the appearance and things like that, make it look cared for, um, is really where I'm working on.
Okay, thanks for that, Trevor, thanks for that update, um, I know you're working really hard on that sort of stuff, so uh, well done on that. Uh, question for me, which I'm going to try and do very quickly, it's a very long comment in the Facebook comments about Alfredston Road um, from a resident who I know very well, um, and to do with the parking restrictions there. Um, and the safety of the junction uh with Deep Cut Bridge Road. Um, I did get the, the faded yellow lines repainted there, um, which is a temporary measure, because there is some very large um, environmental works on Deep Cut Bridge Road coming, that junction is going to be uh looked at um, to see if they can improve it, um, but I'll happily, and I'll drop you a WhatsApp, Debbie, I'll drop you a WhatsApp about that. Um, to see if there's anything in the meantime, until those environmental works come that we can do to address the safety. Although I would urge residents on Alfredston Road just to, to, to take care coming out of that junction until we get that sorted out for you. Okay, so uh, thanks very much for that. Um, Shaun's talking to Joe Dickinson about the parking there at Mitchet Heath, so that's great. Uh, this, uh, okay, it's a question here from Kate on Facebook to Richard Tia. Um, and that is, please could you visit Yavelland Drive in Bagshot? The recent installation of various internet provider, providers has made a right mess of the pavements, help, thank you. So would you take a trip over to Yavelland Drive, Richard?
I'll be over tomorrow afternoon.
Wonderful, that's, that's service for you. Um, yeah, and then Richard can um chase up the, whoever that internet service provider is to uh make sure they reinstate the road properly.
Will do.
Great, thanks for that, Richard, and thanks for your question, uh Kate. So, uh, another one for, let's have a look here for Edward. Um, we are go, uh, so this is from Caroline again. Um, we are going to ask for parking restriction review of Heatherside. Well, that's quite timely, isn't it, um, Edward? Uh, I have seen, I think, a way to request this on Surrey County Council website, but suspect there's more from an individual's perspective and for a specific place. We were more thinking getting a general consensus of problem spots, opposite busy junctions, bus, bus stops, that kind of thing, and then asking them to be looked at. Any guidance on how to best go about this would be appreciated, well, Edward Hawkins is your man for this, Caroline, did you want to say something, Edward?
Um, right, yeah, um, well, there are a number of ways in which we can deal with this. Uh, one is, you know, the A's with me, um, let's talk about the areas that you are particularly concerned. Um, and we can look at those, um, and we can put those forward to the officers for review. At the end of the day, the officers actually look at the areas that we request, whether it's on Heatherside or elsewhere. And they come up with some reasons why it's good, bad, or should or shouldn't happen. And then that goes through to um, a parking task group, uh which is a member officer task group. And that one is chaired by Graham Allaway, I'll come back to that in a second. But so, you know, that is one way of doing that, um, if there is a um, I was going to say a wishlist or a shopping list, whatever you want to say. Um, put enforcement to one side, that is always an issue with any parking. Um, you know, Parkside Estate, just don't talk about enforcement down there, because um, you know, people park really nearly and you know, we have to get the police along at times, that is one route, the other route is that um, your borough councillors um can make uh representation to the parking task group, uh, we say which is chaired by Graham Allaway, who's a borough councillor. Um, I've done, I'm not sure who else is on that, I mean, I'm on as I know, um, as a county representative. Or of course, your borough councillors could speak with me, um, you know, heaven forbid that they might want to work with me, but I didn't say that. I think Caroline, really the best way is for um, you and I to have a conversation uh and look at those, and then I can give some feel from experience of trying elsewhere to see what we can do. If we do that sooner than later, uh, because if we don't, the chances are we're going to miss the time because of the time all this takes, so it's going to be uh, if anything is approved before it takes, but let's, you know, I'm happy just to meet up with you and um talk it through, we can either walk and walk or we can meet up at Pine Ridge and have a coffee or whatever.
Okay, now, um, as I've only got one minute to go, I'm just going to rattle through uh some of these, but um, if it's, if I don't answer this properly for you now, um, please email me and I will make sure you get a proper answer. But one from Matt here about GP provision locally and is there being, anything being done to improve that? Yes, actually, um, the leader of Surrey County Council, uh Tim Oliver, is looking at uh forming some uh, community forum groups um, to look at this, um, working with the health service and so on. Trevor may know a little bit more about this, uh, as that he's on the uh relevant select committee, but there is a lot of work going on around this, isn't there, Trevor?
Yeah, there is, I'm also the NHS friendly community rep, so I get it from that end too.
Yeah, a quick answer if you, if you would.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, the quick answer is, uh workload has actually increased dramatically. Uh, the GPs are actually putting, pushing through far more patient contacts than they did pre pandemic. Um, yeah, and so that's, that is one factor, with some hospital work having migrated to the GPs in order to free up the hospitals, try and attack their backlog. Um, so there's some of that going on. Um, another aspect is a lot of GPs actually retired post pandemic, because the pressures were such that they've either gone part time or they've retired, because um, they no longer feel able to cope with it. Um, so there's that as well. And then there is also um, a set of changes in how GP practices are run um, that people need to understand, because uh, the, the bigger practices have now got a lot of specialist staff and you may well be better off um going to the specialist staff, the physio, the phlebotomist, um, the, you know, heart um, specialism trained nurse, because their consultant nurses are highly trained. Um, you may be better off going to them than the GP for routine care and things like that. So if people are asking to and demanding a GP, they may not be actually going to the right resource. So triage um has become very important, uh, which the receptionists have been trained in. Uh, but again, um, people are sometimes ending up in front of a GP, using up time and they could be better off actually going to where they needed to be. Um, and there are some things like econsult, which plainly are not working um, where people are using to gain the system, and so there's, we're looking at actually taking things like that out wherever possible.
Okay.
Um, and having a different route, so there's a bunch of things going on, uh, but basically more demand and fewer resources. Um, you know, creates a difficult situation.
Okay, thanks for that, uh Trevor, appreciate that. Um, now, there is a question here for Edward, but I'm gonna, um, it was, it was sent in advance and so I'm going to um, ask Edward to answer that uh on email privately, and that's to do with the multway needing resurfacing. Um, and something to do with upper Chobham Road pavement works, but I'll send that to you privately, Edward, if you could get that answered. Um, and there's a final comment uh from um Mark Gordon, that's councillor Mark Gordon uh in Bagshot. He says, can these sessions be longer um than the amount, because of the amount of comments proves that this is just not long enough? I have residents who wanted questions answered. Um, well, I don't think we'll do them longer, I'd like to try and keep them to an hour, because otherwise people get bored and switch off. Um, but we will be doing them more often, that's why we set up the county councillor um Facebook page. We are going to be doing these much more often, and we're going to be doing some with our new community, I'll come to you in a second, Richard. Um, we're going to do some in person ones, we've got a new uh community engagement officer who's just been appointed for Surrey Heath. Um, and we're going to be doing some in person stuff as well, um, because I know that some people are quite keen for that, did you want to say something, Richard?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give Mark Gordon a call.
Great, yeah, um, so um, uh, Richard can answer those questions for you, Mark, for those residents, so sorry, we, we, we ran out of time. Uh, and uh, I'll be working with our other county councillors to get one of these scheduled very soon. So with that, um, I'm going to end this now, uh, just other to say that if you have any other questions, that you want to speak to your county councillor directly, I know they all work very hard on your behalf and will be happy to answer any of your questions. You can email them, you can see our names there on our lower thirds, and alls you do is, so in the case of Edward Hawkins, it would be edward.hawkins@surreycc.gov.uk, or if it's Trevor Hogg, the same trevor.hogg@surreycc.gov.uk. David, did you want to say this?
Please, please check the spelling.
Yeah, ah, yeah, David Lewis, there's a problem with his in that there are actually two David Lewis's at uh Surrey County Council. So David Lewis's is, I believe, david.louis2@surreycc.gov.uk. Um, but if anyone watching this doesn't have email addresses, just drop me a line, I'll happily, I'll happily give you your county councillor's email address. So with, with that, I'd just like to thank our county councillors um for your time this evening, but also to all the members of the public and borough councillors who joined us this evening for all your questions. I thought it was a really good, um, a really good session, so thank you very much, I'll end the live stream if the county councillors can stay where they are.